Your escapade.
That was nice.
It's a good.
Just a little bit.
Well, very.
The nineties.
Yeah, yeah, no, this. This. Um, just to open the house.
Okay, thank you.
You're in time.
Oh.
Yeah, okay, it's weird. But.
That's true.
Yeah.
So we can.
I mean. Yes.
Oh, thank you. My aunt's going through some.
I'm here.
They're doing well.
I tried to reach you yesterday.
Yeah, I was off yesterday.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll try to share with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um.
And we should have three.
Of them.
Yeah. Okay, so he asked me, hey, do we send it?
Okay. Everybody signed in?
Chief.
Welcome everyone. Can we ready? Okay, um. Madam Burke, call please.
Lisa Denenzio Blair, sir Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy. Absent. Sir Bernadette.
Here. Thank you. And. Hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. You had Christmas to look forward to. I have to commend our staff because. It looks phenomenal out there. So you ladies are doing a great job. Thank you. When you walk in, it's festive. This is the way we even have the media. The media even mentioned it. Okay, uh, agenda item one, just Spence reading in the minutes of the workshop on November twenty four and regular meeting. On November twenty fifth. Two, Spence, the reading in the minutes, the special meeting date in November twenty five. Three, to approve bills. Four, to transfer monies submitted by the auditor, November twenty through November twenty sixth. Five is to approve additional appropriations is submitted by the county auditor. Uh, November twenty through the November twenty sixth as listed.
I have a question on.
I think it's one. I think it's on this one, Commissioner.
On five?
Yeah, on six.
No, on five also.
Oh, you do? Okay.
On five, it's four hundred and thirty eight thousand. What's that for?
Tacey McDota, nine one one director, uh, that's moving money to pay our invoices for the year, um, renewals for our CAD software. Uh, we should have got the bills early in the spring. We already appropriated the money for everything. We just didn't get the bills until late. The way they do their billing isn't like on a year to year basis. It's kind of like a rolling clock and it ends up basically. We were behind when I first started here, two and a half years ago now, um, we are now caught up. So this is just for this year. It's good through June of next year. It's our subscription service for CAD. It's our AT&T renewal that you guys passed last week. It's money for that. And then the rapid SOS that we're hopefully passing today. It's the money for that. It's all our encumbrances for the rest of the year for our bills that are due.
Well. We're not, I think we still need to explore the rapid SOS, Commissioner. I, I, we did.
That one we're going to talk about today. It's number sixteen.
Um. Well, yeah, but it incorporates this money.
Well, we, we had covered, we had covered enough money to pay the rest of our bills for the rest of the year. We also have a bunch of Lumen bills that'll be coming in for our network. So we're anticipating those costs coming in. So we had to move some money from one line to the other.
So if we lose that, it doesn't necessarily, well, we don't have to at this point approve that.
They could be there. It doesn't.
Right.
Right, correct.
Right.
We just moved it. So if you do pass it, it's there. We don't have to deal with this again with how that.
We'd like to further discuss it, but I think there's some additional information you may have to supply for us.
Yep.
Here somewhere in the next week.
We probably have, we just.
I think so. It would be good to, if we could. Maybe just meet.
I think all the commissioners have some questions and we need to clarify all that.
I can try to clarify a couple of them today when we get to item sixteen and if it's still not enough.
No, no, I, I think, I think all the three commissioners need to be there. I, I, I think. Commissioner Malloy definitely has some questions, is my understanding.
I know he does, but, um, we all do, but Tacey, you could bring forth what you do have.
Yeah, he, he had some questions about the liability aspects. Um, it's not. You wouldn't be calling and getting an AI for an emergency. Um, it's just like now, if you call a non-emergency number, a ten-digit number, because let's be honest, a lot of people who've been around twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years of the county, they know those numbers. And they call those numbers instead. If I called that number for a non-emergency and I was having a heart attack or stroke, you'd still be in the same situation. We can't guarantee where you're at because we don't get the caller information that you do with nine one one. So you'd still be in the same situation whether we have rapid SOS or not. If somebody called a non-emergency number, was having some type of medical issue, couldn't speak. We would still be dead in the water and not have that information that you need. All this, uh, rapid SOS module is is for the non-emergency call handling. So our non-emergencies like, you know, Hubbard Utilities complaints, dog complaints. Anything like that that are mundane, that alarm calls, stuff like that, that we shouldn't have to handle and tie up resources with, it would handle those. The AI that the software that is embedded. If it doesn't get a response from a human or any kind of voice feedback or anything like that, it automatically kicks over to an actual nine one one operator that it transfers it over. So it's actually better than what we currently have in place in the sense of if I called a non-emergency number and I was having a legitimate medical emergency and I couldn't speak and say where I was at. You would have nothing. The phone would just be dead and we wouldn't be able to find you. Because unless you had a caller ID come up and we were able to do a search on the address, which would take time. You're, you're actually in a better situation this way. I spoke to Van Muren, uh, County of Michigan. They have this working there. They've said it's reduced their call load by like, he says, he goes, I don't have a percentage. He goes, but a lot. He goes, we've been nothing but happy with it. Um, they've had no issues with it at all. I spoke with rapid SOS several times. Uh, they said we can also build in where you could say hit zero for an operator. You know, where you could get a human, but if it does not get any type of feedback or any questions, or it can't understand what you're saying to them, it will transfer over to a nine one one operator.
Is there, um. Any representation or representative that from Rapid, and this is a big amount of money that could actually visit? And give us a presentation, some, you know, I mean, I'm hearing, not that against Tacey, I know that you're bringing it, but it would be for the commissioners. It would be a good opportunity to have. The representative or whomever, whether the.
Are you meeting next week? Yeah.
Yes.
I can try to see if I can get them in next week because obviously there is a little bit of a front just for us budget wise, but like.
It would help.
Locked in before.
Explain, you know, uh, cause you're, you're explaining it, but maybe there's more information they have that we should know that.
And maybe they have a presentation like.
Right.
Amanda said that they could show us.
Like a demo.
All right.
Where's this company out of?
They are out of Michigan.
Michigan. Detroit area?
I'm, I'm sorry. They're out in New York.
New York?
Yeah, they're out in New York. So if you're not familiar with rapid SOS, rapid SOS is the company that basically is pioneering the nine one one side of the network of things. They don't have a nine one one call solution, but what they do have is our CAD solution. What they do have is they have the best location, um, available. So right now, if I call nine one one sitting here, it'll hit off the towers and it'll say, okay. Your location is here in proximity to so many meters. Okay? Rapid SOS goes a step further. They go right to your cell phone, to the location from your cell phone. So Tim can probably speak to that as well, that technology. So what they do is they also have an X axis. So it'll say, I'm at one sixty, uh. Main. And, uh, it'll say I'm on the fifth floor, whereas like just nine one one will say I'm at, it'll basically put me out front of this building. So their technology is actually at the forefront of nine one one. They're the first ones that when you hop into Uber now and it says. Here's your driver's license of the car. Here's what your driver's name is. Here's a picture of him. It asks you to confirm it. Now, within that, within the Uber app, you hit a button and it'll record your whole ride. That goes to rapid SOS. That information is shared with nine one one across the United States. So they're on the forefront of technology with nine one one. This is just some new modules that they're, that they've had running for about a year and we're looking to get in with a couple of them that will help alleviate some work on staff. As well as, like I said, the translator module, uh, which will translate nine one one calls as they happen when you're on an actual call with a nine one one operator. It will translate it word for word. It'll highlight keywords. So if you say weapon, injury, anything like that, it'll highlight it to draw the attention to the dispatcher. It'll show that translation and basically dump that into the call. You can copy and paste it, put it in the CAD notes. And that way you have all that information. So it's just enhancing the abilities that we have.
Yeah.
But I'm more than happy to get them to come in and do a demo for you guys.
I mean.
Next week.
But what we're, what we're looking at, you know, putting out for that and, and I'm, no, you may be wrong. I believe.
Yeah, it's about forty thousand dollars a year.
Right. And I, and I think it's a great opportunity, but you know, to have them actually come in and.
And we need to get rid of those two hundred thousand non-emergency phone calls. I mean, we all agree with that, right?
All right, I'll email her right now while we're sitting here.
Hey, so you want to take your agenda item or did that?
That, that was the item is, is that. So you had kind of tabled a custody and asked that question about liability, um.
And then Commissioner, we're okay with the four eighty-three right now, one ninety, because, um.
Yep.
You know, after we have a presentation, look, you know, uh, for either approval or wherever we go with that. Uh, six, to approve transfer appropriations. From the auditor between November twenty, November twenty sixth, Commissioner, I believe we have a question about the thirty thousand here. I think we wanted to. Commissioner Malloy has some questions. He's not available. Tim. Um. Commissioner, did you? I think we were going to table that until we. Get with. Commissioner Malloy and find out what he had mentioned, something. To us that might be available.
That's for the security software?
Yes.
I'm just making sure. I think he has the explanations. And that.
Is this for, for item eight as well?
Yeah.
I don't, Sharon did the transfer. Is that the same thing, Sharon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then yes.
So yeah, thirty thousand goes along inside of eight, right?
Yes.
And I would say this, the one caveat to this. The, any kind of delay that we.
Tim, put your name.
Oh, Tim. Tim had for, uh, Trumbull County IT. Any delay that we have is impacting users. That's a point to, to, um, sitting here right now. Lisa, our clerk. She does a fantastic job, uh, but a lot of what she does has to handle is remote. Tacey is going to be out on Thursday. She's, she was texting me over the weekend and saying, hey, you know, I don't, I got problems. I need to be able to remote without this software. We, we will not have remote access. So it's, I, when, when, when I came in yesterday morning, I spent about three hours answering calls, answering emails, people asking me, hey, do you need to remote? That's the fact that what we have today is remote access is a requirement. So.
I, I do understand it, you know, and we do need, you know, we, we definitely need. Pay attention to this. I. Uh, Commissioner, if you have anything to add to, uh, in discussion. We had, uh, Commissioner Malloy had some information and I think he wanted to share. Unfortunately, he's not here today. Uh, but the possi- a possible opportunity, but, um. I don't know if you know any more than me, Commissioner.
No, I, I don't.
So then we're in agreement then to. Wait for Commissioner Malloy? Okay, Tim. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, that's agenda eight. So we are on seven. And that is to reappoint. Kimberly Highlands to the member of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities. For the term January one of twenty six, ending December thirty one, twenty nine. She was appointed by the board. On October twentieth, twenty twenty one. I don't see any. Issue there. Nine, Gary.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Gary Schaefer, Engineers Office. Number nine is clear with our office grants of special angels, supplier permits that are listed. Rod ten is to go with our office grant your roadway permits. It's to go with Enbridge. Eleven is our annual legislation. Brie, your commissioners, so we come to the, to the commissioners and they approve pretty much our, our routine work throughout the year. It's annual legislation. Probably every time this year.
Yeah. Everything went well. Everything. Let, uh. Timelines in advance of when they were supposed to. We had a good, uh. Presentation at the, um. Ribbon cutting. Last week on Miles Road.
Very well.
Yeah.
Thanks to Nick. Yeah, you helped.
Yeah.
They had a very good turnout. Preston.
Yeah.
Big bracket.
Just a little. Nick of time.
Is anybody over there for?
You like that?
I'll tell you one person that was. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I say, I heard it worked well, though. I know a few people that were out there on Miles Road. Says it worked perfect. Should, should back up all the way to those stop signs there. On Dick's Plaza, on routinely in the past, this is what we do as well.
The UPS drivers.
Yeah. You gotta keep them laughing.
You do.
Good. Thank you, Gary. Um. It's, uh, this. HR. I don't know anything about the life. Does this go along with the benefits and?
It's not.
No, no.
No?
It's not HR. It's, it did start with HR. It came from the prosecutor.
I guess I can probably handle this one.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we handed it over to.
Uh, Bill Dance of the Prosecutor's Office. This is, um. This is just a weird situation here. This is a, just the, the short version here is. That years ago, the county and offered. Through some of its companies that we work with, private life insurance for any employees who wanted to sign up independently of the county through other life and through these life insurance providers, but pay their own premiums, all those kinds of things. Uh. Two of them, uh, the, the people that took out these policies have passed away. And it was discovered that. For whatever reason, the form that they had used when they signed up for these policies had a blank that said beneficiary. And then in parentheses, employer. And it made them. Likely mistakenly believed they were supposed to input their employer there and not the beneficiary of whom they wanted the policy to go to. So in effect, what has happened is these policies now, we've been notified as the county that these people have passed away. And that the county is the beneficiary. Uh, and by all of the information that we've been able to gather. It doesn't appear that that was the intent of either of these individuals to leave their life insurance money to Trumbull County. Uh.
I don't mean that. I mean.
What this is essentially approving is for the commissioners to. Sign a document to say, we do believe that was an error and that these beneficiaries should not have been listed as Trumbull County. It should be the estate of the individual, which will then allow this money to go to the probate court to be distributed with their estates rather than come to, uh, to Trumbull County. And again, by all accounts, that appears to be what their wishes actually were. And this was a, the form was very confusing, I will say.
Do you think there's any others out there?
Uh, that's, you've asked the same question. We've, for whatever reason, ran into two of them almost back to back. There may be others. We don't know. And again, uh, the, like you said, I, I do blame this on the form. For whatever reason, that form was written in a very confusing way. And when people filled it out, it just. You know, and again, you know, we have had people leave money to the county before on purpose. That's not. Out of the realm of possibility. A lot of times people will leave money to the dog pound, for example. Uh, in townships you often see to the fire department, to, to the cemetery, things like that. This does not appear to be, e- e- both of these appear to be different than those cases, I would say.
And you, you approve of this for us to be able to, I mean, I know it's apparent that. It's a mistake, but you, you would agree that. That we would be okay with.
Yeah, we have a letter from Prosecutor's Office.
I believe that.
Do we get a letter?
Yeah, I believe that's, I wasn't the person that primarily handled these. I just know a little bit about it, but, um, that's the, the short version of the situation.
Yeah, I have no issue with it. I don't think that people, you know, there's very few people I think that would want to leave. I like, other than like you said, if it were the dog pound or if it were. You know, some sort of.
And generally what we see in those cases is people do specifically designate, we want it for this purpose.
Right.
And this wasn't done that way. This was a very unusual situation.
Okay. Yeah, and there's two of them right now?
Correct.
Where's the other one?
Um, this. This is only one. This was only one.
Because, um.
Yeah.
Would you like me to speak to?
Yeah, go ahead. Go for it.
The other one, uh, Alex and Johnson Bushing, so HR does handle all like insurance. For retirees, employees and so on and so forth. So we've been dealing with this for, I honestly think maybe a year now. Uh, we did all the upfront, realized it wasn't, I hope it wasn't an insurance policy that we even had. We went through all of our contracts from the years past. We realized really quickly it was not even a vendor that we ever had. So that's how we knew. We kicked it over to the Prosecutor's Office. This was the first one that was brought to our attention. Um, because the funeral home and so on and so forth was hounding HR as why are you not paying for this? We knew something was wrong. Like I said, we kicked it over to Prosecutor's Office. But the second one came about. S- I want to say maybe three to four months after, um, and I don't believe. Which is probably why it hasn't been addressed yet.
It could be. It could be coming.
This one actually got kicked over to a point where a decision had to be made, um, which is why we need to trust.
Okay, it's, um, it's okay to match your names then?
I mean, it's, yeah, it's.
It's internally, yeah. The policy was internally. There is another name, um. Because it's not on here. I mean, I know the name. I can get support from the sheriff after this so we can be on the lookout for it. Um, but yeah, County HR is ready to, to anticipate that this might keep happening in the future, but we have a process and we're ready to. It is done.
Okay. That's self-explanatory at this point now, so, um. Thank you, Bill. Tacey, we already went through you and fourteen is to adopt the resolution.
Oh. That's, that's, that's Daryl.
Yeah. Oh, why did I put Tacey here?
I, I don't know.
Number thirteen, Daryl Donegan, uh, Trumbull County Facilities. Um. This is a. This is a work order program to replace the one that we have now. Um. The agreement is coming up on December thirty first for the, the current one. Um, hasn't been updated since the nineties. It's not really doing anything that we need it to do. And to add on to it or to add building. Blocks to the current one is significantly, uh, more expensive than. The maintenance care. Um. Bill had some concerns about the, uh, agreement. I sent it back to GNX four. They took all the concerns, either eliminated them or reworded them and. So. Everything's ready to go on our side.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Phone number. Phone number.
It should be zero zero one.
Yeah, not only that. Are we supposed to be in eleven hundred?
I believe facility dude is paid out of.
Okay.
I wanted to check because I, I will confirm.
Yeah.
When I get back to my office, but I do believe that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this replaces the facility dude?
Yes. It's a facility dude.
Again, it's.
Is that a guy?
It's from the nineties.
A facility dude.
Thanks, thanks for going through all of them. That, that's amazing.
Thank you, Daryl. Okay. Fourteen. Is to adopt the resolution, resolution recognized thirteenth annual twenty twenty five class of twenty under twenty. Sponsored by the Tribune and Akron Valley Children's Hospital. Okay. This acknowledge all of the accomplishments, contributions made by individuals. And congratulates them for their distinguished honors listed here. And fifteen, planning commission, Nick, is this you?
This is, uh, commissioners, but I do know about it. I can speak to it a few.
Yeah, you probably know.
Yeah, uh, Nick Hogs from County Planning Commission. Uh, this is for the commissioners to adopt a formal resolution to consider whether it's for the public convenience of welfare. To vacate, uh, a road from County. Uh, specifically County Highway sixty-nine or a portion of that road. Um, this is located in section thirty-one, Powell Township. And, uh, we're looking at to potentially benefit business. Um, it's growing in that area. Um, we're also looking at that because of the all Ohio Future Fund grant slash loan that Western Reserve forty forty has received. Uh, that is going to create a direct access road from, uh, County Highway sixty-nine to State Route forty-five. Um, so this is to set a public viewing date, which. We, uh, I forget what the dates are in a public hearing date. Um. To, to obviously view the road, have a public hearing and get the public comments of. Whether this will be for the welfare and public convenience of Trumbull County.
And this will incorporate to the, uh. Trumbull County Engineers. Planning Commission Commissioners, um, and there will be several. Um, meetings. I'm sure there will be, you know, several meetings before we do. Consider the, uh, vacation of that road, or not vacation, that. Actually, the, um.
Partial vacation.
You have the.
Partial vacation.
The here date, I think, is January fourteen.
Yes, thank you.
Prior to the, put it in there.
We should probably put that link in.
Okay.
Put their dates. Yeah, just so the dates are set.
Okay.
When will that be?
January fourteen. It'll be at ten AM before our regular meeting.
Uh. Well, representatives, you think from. Can bro, there will be present?
There will be representatives of sure for things, uh, all the businesses in that area, um, including that family bar, um, including. Uh, some of the other businesses in, in Weatherfield Township that currently use Pine Avenue, that won't be affected by the, uh. Potential partial vacation and, and the, uh, access road being filled with the all-out future funds. So there will probably be representatives from all businesses in that area. Um, and, uh, we've contacted all of the local municipalities between Powell Township, Ford City, um. Weatherfield and Niles. I don't know if they will be here or not, but contacting them to.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you.
No, that's all right.
But you, you know, you, you, you work best as an along looking. Trumbull County Engineer. Um. Sixteen. Daryl, you already did yours.
So that was Tacey. That was Tacey.
Oh, that was Tacey. Okay, yeah. Well. Commissioner, you have any, uh, I did. I did want to comment, um. I did, um. Last Tuesday, have an opportunity to go over to. Uh. Uh, JFS. And had a tour of the building, met, was very, very welcoming, welcome there that they'd like to see a commissioner there. Um, have a hundred seventy-five employees over there. And I probably shook about a hundred of their hands. And they're very nice. They're people that are there over thirty some years. And I didn't realize it. So I just want to commend JFS for the job that they do. Including our staff, um. It, it was enlightening to go over there, you know, when I had a break to be able to do so. Um. Commissioner, you have anything to add? Danny is, uh, off. It's just you and I.
Yeah.
Tomorrow too. Nothing? Oh, Major, do you have something?
Sure. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
So, um, David Bobby Jail Administrator. So I, I offered a letter, um, to the commissioners just talking about. Some of the maintenance issues that we're having in the jail. Um. I don't know if you want me to read the letter with your permission. I'll read the letter.
Sure.
Eric. Morning Commissioners and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to address several longstanding and increasingly urgent maintenance issues within the Trumbull County Jail. Many of these concerns are not new. They have persisted for decades and they continue to place unnecessary strain. On our operations, our staff and the individuals housed in our facility. First, our plumbing system has been a chronic problem. That precedes many of us. Persistent leaks, failing pipes and recurring. Water intrusions have become. Persistent leaks, failing pipes and recurring water intrusions have become part of the daily environment. Every time it rains, officers are forced to deploy trash cans and old blankets simply to control the water leaking into the building. On some occasions, this leaking includes drainage from failing plumbing lines. Corrections officers who perform an extraordinary difficult job, protecting the public and managing a complex inmate population. Should not have to worry about rainwater or toilet water dripping onto their work areas. Second, the impacts of these failures extend directly to inmate housing. We currently have twelve cells that must remain unlocked because the toilets do not flush. Or there is no functioning drinking water in the cell. This is not the only, this is not only a violation of basic operational standards, it places an additional strain on our housing units. We all, we are already operating in an overcrowded environment. And losing the use of these cells makes an already difficult situation substantially worse.
I take a break.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Do you want some water? You want some water? Is that it?
Uh?
Okay. Um. Okay, maybe get a little. Mention all of that, um. I'll, I'll continue to read for Major Bobby here, Commissioner, uh. The heating system, third, the heating system is in a critical state. The jail is currently relying on a single boiler to heat the entire facility. Over the recent holiday weekend, that remaining boiler malfunctioned three separate times. And we did, and Commissioner, we spoke about this in the boilers, we got a lot of maintenance. You okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Everybody's like, getting more funky down.
So, oh, what do you mean, you, you, you getting a little?
That like cold, a little bit of cold.
Oh, that sinus related stuff, yeah.
So third, our heating system is in a critical state. The jail is currently relying on a senior, single boiler to heat the entire facility. Over the recent holiday weekend, that remaining boiler malfunctioned three separate times. Maintenance staff were able to bring it back online, however, the problem is not fixed. And according to maintenance, I guess that was three separate times, but they had to come in, I think, three times every time. So it was almost like, I don't know, nine times they had to come in. The increased strain on the existing boiler is going to create a problem. The question is not whether it will fail, but when, when it will fail. Staff have repeatedly complained about building temperatures and these fluctuations impact not only the employees, but the inmates as well. Regardless of their charges or circumstances, inmates have a legal right to drinking water and living conditions that maintain acceptable temperatures. When our systems fail, we fall short of meeting those obligations. These issues place an increasingly vulner, increase, place us in an increasingly invulnerable position. Our staff, who are already tasked with some of the most demanding responsibilities in county government, are working in an environment that is deteriorating around them. Our inmates, who depend on the county to meet basic standards of care and custody, are placed at risk through no fault of their own. And it, and as administrators, we are charged with operating within the boundaries of safety, legality and professional standards. Obligations may be difficult when the facility's infrastructure cannot, cannot support its mission. I realize the county is tasked with maintaining several buildings with limited resources. The main difference is. That if the heat is not working in a particular building, operations can be suspended and staff could go home. We do not have that option. A prime example was when the sewage pipe broke recently in the administration building. Staff were sent home for the day. If that were happening in the jail, we would, we would maintain our operation as closing the facility is not an option. I am asking for the board's immediate and sustained attention to these problems. The jail's maintenance issues are not temporary inconveniences, they are systematic, systemic failures that will continue to worsen if not addressed comprehensively. We cannot continue to operate a modern correctional facility with decades old plumbing failures. A leaking roof that requires makeshift containment during every rainfall. And a heating system that is one malfunction away from a catastrophic failure. Nor can we continue to manage overcrowding when we are unable to utilize every available cell due to broken toilets and non-functioning water systems. I respectfully request that the county prioritize a plan for substantial repair, replacement or modernization of these critical system. Doing so is essential for protecting our staff, meeting our legal obligations and ensuring the safety and dignity of everyone who enters the Trump County Jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Major. Um, okay, I know Commissioner, you and I both would agree. The boilers, number one, have been nothing but a money pit. For the past several years, even since I've been coming here, I've heard about maintenance upon maintenance upon maintenance. I think we need three, from what Daryl had mentioned to us, Daryl. Because they work in unison with one another by the way that they're computerized now.
Yes, sir.
So it's gonna be a pretty major expense, but I did not know about the toilets and all these other issues, the leaking. You know, the trash cans and all those things. I mean, they need to be, we need to pay attention to those things. I guess it's a maintenance issue. That, you know, that maintenance is gonna have to work on. Daryl, you have anything to add to this?
Daryl Donegan, uh, Trump County Facilities, yes, um, in the last month or so, we've had, uh, roofing company come in. Do roof assessments on, uh, several of the county buildings. Um, they've given us a plan on correction. At, now at this point, there's snow, it's kinda hard to implement those, those repairs. Um, however, those options are there, we can look at.
Commissioner, I wonder if we have. The availability to some funds. Through settlements that we can use. For, for this, for this option, like opioid money is possible, possibly, I don't know.
Well, first of all, the ongoing problem's been there for years, um. In January, I took a tour of the jail and I saw the buckets, you know, roughly giving the toilets. Uh, when you flush the toilets, sometimes they get hot water instead of cold water. I mean. That plumbing down there has been a disaster since. Built back in, I don't know how many years.
Nine. Nineteen.
There you go, whatever it is, and. And there's, I think there's major problems with the, uh, with the plumbing that needs corrected. But I, I think you're right. I think our first concern is we're gonna have to get on the boilers. And, um, we're gonna have to work about replacing those, um. And then we'll go from there, uh, and we do have some options for funds. And I think possibly we're gonna have to go to the state and maybe they can give us some funds to, uh, help correct some of the, the other problems in there. I saw where the governor gave some money out, um, just last week for some things, so. We need to get in contact with the governor's office. I think there's some funds that are available. I think, I think we need a list, you know, we need to justify that list and say, look, Governor, you need this money.
Do we incorporate, do we incorporate our, uh, grant writing team, KO on top?
Well, we can, but I think we as commissioners are gonna have to make the initial call first. And then, then we can substantiate that with, with a letter or, or grants from the state, but. Grants are fine, but I think he has some discretionary funds there that he could, he could help us possibly, uh, solve those problems. First of all, do we even know how to fix the plumbing there? I mean, I mean, we haven't even done an assessment there, have we?
Um, I've had a plumber in the last month, a couple times, making some repairs. Um, but as far as a whole building assessment, we have not.
Probably need, need to do, have an engineer in there and say, okay, what is exactly wrong, how we, you know? We don't wanna get into where we fix this pipe and then thirty feet away, another pipe, or, I mean, we need to know. What, what the heck we're getting into there, and I don't think we know right now, other than it's bad.
Well, one thing for sure, we, we definitely have to pay attention to those boilers.
Those that.
I, I think. I mean, the first, the first thing that we need to do is, we, we gotta pay attention to get, keeping that jail. Them boilers need to operate properly. Without, without that, like you said, there, you know, you, you have no option. You can't close the jail. And, you know, you're in a, you're in a bad position.
They can deal with the leaks, but you can't, there's no heat.
I mean, you know, we're, we'll pay attention, we'll address that issue too as well. But I think the boilers, we're gonna have to find a way and, and make this happen sooner than later.
I think, Daryl, I think you're on, you're moving forward, you, giving us a quote, seeing what needs to be done with that, so sooner the better on that.
Commissioners, Bill Dance at Prosecutor's Office, I just remind you guys that, you know, when we're talking about things like replacing boilers and whole heating, cooling systems, plumbing systems. That the bidding threshold is gonna go up at the beginning of the year, but we're still talking. I think at, at the first of the year, my estimate at least would be around seventy-nine thousand dollars. I think a lot of this sounds a lot more expensive to me, so if you're talking about maybe an engineer or design, you know, architect to come in and look at those. Kind of systems, that's a separate section of the statute, but on things that need to be moved on quickly, I think you should, you know, try to consider the competitive bidding aspect. Because it's gonna take a little bit of time to get that done, but it's gonna need to be done probably.
Even on an emergency basis?
Well, there's only certain things in the revised code that can, can be considered emergencies, and, uh, one of them increases the threshold. But I'm not sure it increases it enough to cover the major systems in the jail like that. The other thing is where there's physical disaster structures and, and things like that, I'm not sure that just a failing boiler is gonna constitute. Uh, you know, physical disaster, that's usually things like natural disasters have, have cut off some of your, your buildings and things like that. Uh, I, I think it's, I, I, I don't know that that's the right way to go in this.
So then, what you're, what you're proposing is that we start a bidding process? And, uh, I mean.
Well, I think it's up to the commissioners one, but that's, that's.
So get the, get the, or engineering study done? Or is that you, Daryl?
Um, Daryl Donegan, Trump County, uh, Facilities. So we've called three different vendors and three contractors in, um, and they've done in-house engineering. On, rather than us sending it out and having a firm do it for us. Uh, they do it in-house and then they make a, uh, a proposal based on their, on their engineering.
And that was on all three?
That's on all, on all three.
For the heating system?
So, yes.
So they just need to submit?
No, so that's not compliant, that's just a, that's an exploratory mission there, which is fine. Uh, but again, wh- when we talk about systems like that, that are gonna probably be in excess of that seventy-seven, seventy-nine thousand dollar range. They, that needs to go through the statutory bidding process, so that's a, that's a, a bid package with the scope of work. That's the responses in sealed bid, you know, form, we're, we're used to doing that here, we, we do that all the time, that's, that's what we need to do. Uh, you know, the, the, it's again, if you want people to kind of give you. Um, you know, quotes, as soon as we know that it's gonna be in excess of that, I think that's when the quote process isn't gonna be sufficient. We've gotta move and pivot to that competitive bidding.
I agree with that, okay, but we have to make sure everybody's bidding the same thing though. And, and how do we, how do we know? If we have three different companies.
What you would do is you'd either do that in-house with our, with our maintenance group. Or you'd get that, that design professional to come in and do that for you to make that part of the specs. Uh, but that's different than getting three quotes, that's all I'm saying.
Right, right. But do you think that you can get the design for us so we can put it out for bid without going with a professional?
So, so there's a lot of things in play here. Um, the boilers that are in place. Um, ten to twelve weeks to get anything. Um, I do have a vendor or a supplier for boilers that promises three weeks. So anybody that I've talked to as far as getting quotes, I've told them those are the specific boilers we want because of availability. I mean, most of them are out twelve weeks, by then we're through, you know, we're into spring. That's the problem with the RFP process is that, you know, we have one boiler work in this building. And we're coming up into the cold season where we need to.
Daryl, that's just, you're just speaking to the boilers right now. What, what I think the commissioners are asking is the long withstanding issue of. The plumbing, eh, we, I, I, I don't mean to be on the spot, but I feel like we need to hire somebody outside, obviously, we, we.
The plumbing?
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
Cause I think it's a whole.
Anything in the plumbing, and actually the plumber that I had in there working, um.
We need.
Said that we need to look at specific, um, jail plumber, if you will, that are, that are familiar with, with those facilities. Um, there's a lot of nuances in that building, you know, um, balance and valves, uh, push buttons. The ability to turn water off, um, and things like that. That, so yeah, that's a, that's a special plumber.
But the boiler is not tied even, uh, separate, we can address that.
No, when, when we talk about boilers, it's for heating.
Right.
Start the bid.
Um.
Can you get a suspect for the boiler so we can advertise that? That's my question.
Right.
Or do we need somebody from the outside to give us specs?
No, I have all the specs and all the information for me.
So you need to present that to us so we can get that advertised and then put it out for bids, right?
Right. That's, that's.
Sooner the better, and if you could get it to us by tomorrow, we'll do it tomorrow.
And then we'll, and then we'll, we, we address heating first and then we'll move into plumbing and other things, because. Right now, those boilers are a major issue, and we're gonna need to get on that, like I said, sooner than later, so. Daryl, if you can get all that information together for us, put it.
If you get it to us by tomorrow, we can do it, we can prove it tomorrow.
True, yeah.
Is it just one boiler? So there's five boilers total. We used to have six heats, hopefully, but if, no, we only had like thirty-eight brand and it was just two, li- it literally, what was it, a few tubes?
It was a few tubes, some tubes were capped off, it wasn't a full repair, it was just to.
It was minimal compared to what we have coming on.
They've, they've been, they've been nothing but a money pit.
Yeah, at some point, just thirty years ago.
We gotta assign this stuff.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, just throw money down the toilet, basically.
And, and we, and we need to get ahold of the governor's office to see if we can get some funds for that. He just gave a bunch for a jail. I have it on my phone, I'll look it up, but this is, this is important.
And I think, Mr. It's a good question, some of it, it's a good point, some of the reasons that we weren't able to secure funding in the past, I hate to put you on the spot, was because. We weren't necessarily able to come up with all of them, I mean, there were certain things we had to be, um, other jails.
Funding?
Yes, other jails in the county got special money.
Yeah, Dave Bobby, jail administrator. So every year, and I don't know how many years they had been doing it, uh, through, through DRC, actually, they were dedicating a certain amount of money. Uh, to go to jail repairs, rebuilding jails and, and I think actually building new jails. Um, and I think last year was the last, they're not doing it this year, they did it for I don't know how many years. Uh, but last year, um, we, we didn't, we didn't ask for any money, we didn't get any money, um, but I don't think they're doing, I, I immediately asked. Uh, the person that's responsible for that with DRC if they were doing it again this year, and he said they're not, so. We didn't, we didn't apply for any money.
But that's not the money I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the part of money that.
Yeah. Near part of money.
That I think.
Yeah, um, yeah, this was the, specifically the money raised, it was through DRC.
Excellent.
Oh, and, I mean, we hear, I mean, we've known about it, it's been there for a long time.
Well, and that, that was part of the reason, I mean, just this discussion. If somebody said, go ahead and put the boilers in right now. We're probably gonna be cutting grass by the time the boilers. And we need to start talking about our air conditioning now, so that we can get that fixed before it's ninety-five degrees out. Now, I mean, that, that was my whole intention of coming here is to say, look, this, this needs to be, you know. You, you mentioned, we went through the tour last January and I showed you those issues. Well, if you go today. You're gonna see the same issue that you saw last year.
Maybe more.
Nothing, nothing has been fixed, and it's not gonna get fixed unless. You know, we, we dedicate the, the resource and the money to get it fixed, it's, it's not going to fix itself.
Just keep putting silk on a pig.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, thank you, Major.
We'll, we'll keep you informed.
Alright, thank you.
So Daryl, if you could get us that information, at least we'll start.
Yeah, we're gonna get, get it out for bid.
Definitely.
Yep.
And then we'll.
And make sure the prosecutor's office sees that.
Well, you know, that, that's kind of the issue, is we don't have specifications. So, they don't, that's the problem here, is we don't have specifications. If we had specifications, we'd have something to review, but, but we don't, so I don't know. Who's gonna, you know, I guess we may have the technical end from Daryl, but I don't, you know, I don't know where we're, you know.
We need a professional.
We, now, if we have some that we've used in past projects, we can swipe some. You know, language from, we can use some, some of the, like the front end documents from a, from prior bid.
Yeah, it's kind of a proper stream.
Okay.
We, we replaced the boiler there.
Yeah, we can do some of that.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, it's gonna have to be, I know we wanna move quickly on it, so I guess the commissioners are gonna have to figure out the, you know, the funding end of it. You know, that we start the process.
Well, but what you're saying is. Maintenance aren't, is not gonna. maintenance, aren't, is not gonna get us the proper documentation for the bid.
They have the, they, it sounds like they have the information about what size boilers, the insulation, all that kinda stuff, but they don't have the whole front-end package of the bid that, that we not need to use. It's all of the, all of the specifications on how the bid process works, what's required of the vendors.
It's gonna take time.
Oh, that's, the, the bid process takes time. That's, it's unfortunately, that's, that's why these things need to generally be planned ahead. I know, I, I feel bad for Dylan and Parla, they walked into a lot of this about the same time and are trying to figure it all out, but.
I have some questions I'd like to ask later about that. Cause we do have staff who's supposed to be outside of Daryl, there's staff that we do routine boiler checks, we're supposed to be doing all of that. That's actually where.
They're doing the boiler checks. These are, I mean, they're, they're just their end of time. We've been.
Is there a way that we?
Everybody's pushed it out so hard. It's, it's like they would come up here like all the time and just the money didn't, it wasn't there. It wasn't there, so they would Band-Aid and patch it and now we're at the point where.
Well, I don't know if I can agree with that. I think so much.
Well, if anything, it helps us learn how to. This is not, it's just what.
It's not worth.
There needs to be better planning increase. I mean, every ten years are we reassessing these, every twenty, you know, we need to have money set aside for those things. Cause it could.
It's still, it's still not clear about. The technicality of it, like for the bid, we might have to hire somebody in here to give, get all those proponents that you're looking to get before the bid goes out. I don't know, the Daryl.
It depends on, again, it depends on how we wanna do this. You know, the, the bid package essentially has two main parts. It has the front-end specifications that have all of your technical, not the technical requirements, but the, the, uh, the general requirements for bid submission, the what's required of your vendors, your bonding requirements, all those kinda things. And then it also has the technical specifications, which are your, what size boiler do we need? What brands would be compatible with some of the equipment that we already have? What is gonna be expected of the, of the vendor? Is it tear out old and install new? You know, what all is that scope of the technical heating and cooling stuff? That's really their area. Now, there are some things that if they don't have either the staff or the, the, the experience to put that together, then we can't hire out for a consultant and architect and engineer to help do that. We don't need that in all cases. In some cases, they can do it internally. It just depends on, on that. So what we can try to do is like Sharon said, we could try to take the front-end specifications we've used from another project, like when we did the jail boy or the courthouse. And see if we can just adapt those to then add on the technical specs from the jail to make the complete package. What I'm saying though is that, that does take work. It doesn't, it doesn't happen like that, and then you've gotta give the advertising time for the bid. You've gotta have the bid response. You've gotta have time then for likely for these guys to then take a look at those responses, see which ones the lowest invest and then, you know, have time for the award, then have time for ordering the, the stuff. So what I'm saying is, this is something that, you know, the effort and the time, it does take some. It's, it's not an immediate fix and you know, I understand, you know, we like to say, well, it's an emergency, but one thing that I like to caution people on is that, you know, the law isn't real friendly to self-created emergencies, let's put it that way. That, you know, if, if the issue is that something's been neglected for ten, fifteen years and all of a sudden now it's an emergency, we're in some tricky legal territory, you know, and I understand, you know, most of the people sitting around here weren't here when this probably started, right? You know, we're trying to fix this now, but we have to be careful of that, of that legal end of things. So if we can keep these, if we can keep these existing boilers just kinda firing along, you know, a little, little bit, you know, this is the process, and then hopefully though, this would be a solution that isn't good for just the next year. It's gonna be the one that's good for the next twenty to thirty years. That's, that's the goal.
Yep.
Okay, how long ago was that? Boilers put in?
Not long at all. Part of money is actually.
Yeah, that was, that was our thought, but recent, yeah.
Yeah, it's the last couple of years.
Okay.
Soft bullet.
All right.
I will ask the question I wanna ask, so just.
Well.
Well, it, it, the good thing is we, we recognize the importance of it and we'll move forward.
That's all we have for our agenda. Yes.
Gary Newbrow, Senator Engineer, uh, Commissioner, I sent you an email back on November the sixth. It has to do with some required training by at least two of the county commissioners. Did you all get that email?
Probably, but we get like hundreds of EDIs.
All right, okay, all right, but there's, uh, in order for us to uh, maintain our principle of forgiveness or for the blueprint phase two project, just Brian Crawford, EVA, he sent this email to me. Says at least two county commissioners will need to complete the R cap, uh, utility management training.
What is it?
So, uh, there's a link on here for you to get to this.
What's an online thing?
Yeah, it's an online thing. You get on there, uh, I've had commissioners in the past, but it doesn't sound like it's difficult and I've never done it, but.
What's the date? He sent November sixth?
November the sixth. I can run you a copy of this, just so you can look it up again.
What's the deadline for that?
Um, he wrote, give me a deadline, but he said you take classroom in-person trainings will also be available sometime next calendar year. So I, I don't think you'd be interested in classroom training. I think you could just do it on a computer. But I do know that, um, I'm getting close to moving this forward to sending the application in and the application for the project itself, even though they've already allocated the money for it. I don't think they're gonna prove it till at least these two.
You know how long it takes for that training session?
I would think it was about an hour, from what past commissioners told us.
Yeah, I'll go on there. If, you wanna resend that? Or just give me that or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make you a copy of that.
All right.
All right, and the other issue I had, Commissioner, is that Bob communicated to me that at last week's workshop, he had some questions about Perkins Jones sewer out there for Amazon.
It might have been.
Just about when they, uh, when the residents could tie in.
Uh, well, I have the substantial completion certificate to be signed by Commissioner Henry on the day. So when, get this, we'll get the letters out to them. Yeah, and there were some questions about are the homeowners lost to the cost overages? I don't know, that's not even a issue.
An issue, okay.
This was all paid for by Amazon.
I, I know, there, there, there just seems to be some confusion out there. People were.
Yeah.
So I think there's some misinformation out there and that was probably one of them, that they paid some money. Then, I, I think they misread the letter that was sent to them and thought that they owed additional money. I think that was just a miscommunication.
I can see that. Well, on this one, the tax and fees and the health department charges are all being paid by Amazon. They just have to hire that contractor. Now, on Scoville Drive, when I sent out the final assessments, that project did go slightly over budget. And I did rate that to the, on the final assessment letters to those residents that even those projects went over, we're still at our guaranteed price, we told you in the public hearing. Someone might have confused that with overages and maybe that's getting.
So their price, the homepage price didn't go up?
No, you know, that's how we do our public hearing. We go, this is your max assessment. So.
Yeah, I think there was just.
All right, that's all I have.
Only see relayed the information to you.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Is it not? Motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Sir, in that?
Yes.